Well, good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you here to our first meeting of 2021 for the Minnehaha County Commission. We'll go ahead and start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reminder that documents are available for review down next to Commissioner Hyburger. And please silence your cell phones. And Craig is here this morning if you need a listening device. So we get to start the morning with a special ceremony. It's our opportunity for Commissioner Karski and I, who are just newly elected, to have our oath sworn in. So I'll let you-
Go alphabetically.
Okay. There we go.
So Commissioner Bender, I'm going to read the oath, and you're holding the Bible, and if you accept the oath, just say "I do," and then I'll have you also sign. So you, Jean Bender, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge all the duties of your office of Minnehaha County Commissioner.
I do.
All right, thank you.
Use your real signature.
My real one?
Oh, yeah, my pleasure. Probably won't look at another free signature. Hey. You've been plating them up.
Yep, that's fine.
Thanks for wearing it. Let's go shoot from here. All right. Dean, ready?
Just give me two seconds to pull this stuff out.
My voice doesn't work.
No. Absolutely. She's got her own Bible. Perfect. That's great. So same routine, Dean. I'm going to read the oath. If you're willing to accept it, signify by saying "you." You, Dean Karski, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge all the duties of your office of Minnehaha County Commissioners.
I do.
All right, thank you. You may sign.
You need to sign it.
Yep, I'll sign after you-
Alfred, I'm going to do your signature.
All right. Thank you, Judge.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Judge.
Judge, is this your pen? This might be his pen. Judge Powers, is that your pen?
Yes.
Thank you very much for coming this morning.
You're welcome. Thanks for what you guys do.
All right. So that takes us to special business. Instead of the meeting open, I consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is the selection of the Commission Chairperson for 2021.
I would like to make a motion to have Dean Karski the Chairperson of the 2021 County Commission.
Second. Motion and a second. Any comments, speeches?
No speech.
All right. Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ceremonial switching of the chairs.
All right. With that, we move into the selection of our Vice Chair for 2021. Do we look for nominations?
I make a motion to appoint or to nominate Cindy Hyburger.
We have a motion for Commissioner Hyburger to be Vice Chair and a second speech? No? Okay. We'll do a roll call vote.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. That passes unanimously. Congratulations, Commissioner Hyburger. We move on to our designation of our official county newspaper for 2021.
Good morning, Craig Dewey, Commission Office. We have several individuals from some of the local newspapers here. Something that South Dakota codified law requires of counties each year is to designate the legal newspapers where the minutes would be printed and other notices that the county has in the course of business. And so proposals were solicited right before Thanksgiving, and we even had our first response back on Black Friday. Someone was busy working that day. So individuals are here. You have the memo with the different pricing. We have both the Argus Leader and the other Gannett-owned weekly newspapers, as well as the other weekly newspapers here. And I know typically, as far as tradition is concerned, the Commission has offered a chance for the local newspapers to just speak a little bit about their proposal if you would like to hear that. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
And then, as a friendly reminder, state law requires that you select three or more papers as the legal newspapers for the county.
And last year, if I may comment, in the interest of basically getting the news out to the entire county, for all the newspapers in the county, we went, we basically selected everybody. And I, again, would be in favor of doing that. The cost is minimal, but I think that the information is important to be as widely dispersed as possible, so. Any other comments, motions?
Commissioner Karski?
Don't need to-
Commissioner-
Just as a quick point of clarification, the newspapers that were selected last year were the Argus Leader, Garretson Gazette, Minnehaha Messenger, and Brandon Valley Journal. There were two newspapers that were not selected out of the proposals submitted.
Okay. Thank you. We do need a motion and a second, though.
I'd make a motion to approve what we did in 2020.
Second, with a comment when you get a chance.
Commissioner Barth?
I just think we've been so well-served by this group of newspapers and, you know, here, where they're even here today. Thank goodness. And local, local business, they gave us Dave. And I thank them very much.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. And I, did you want to make a comment?
I didn't want to make a comment. I just wanted to say to the Commissioners, thank God 2020 was in the rearview mirror, guys. Right? And everything I've read in Dave's articles and in your minutes, you guys did a good job keeping our, keeping us on a smooth sailing in a tumultuous year. So thank you, guys, all for your work.
Thank you.
For the record, your name?
Oh. Garrick Moritz, editor and publisher of the Garretson Gazette, so thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming this morning.
All righty.
Bill Meyer, publisher of the Brandon Valley Journal. I just want to say thank you for the support of our weekly newspapers. It truly does mean a lot to us and to our readers. For nearly the first two years of our operation, we were not a legal newspaper. And I had a subscriber ask me, how come we don't have those legals? And when I explained the process we had to go through, they were surprised, but they're very thankful that they have all of this information at their hands or on our website, which is obviously free to all. So again, thank you for all your support. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Lisa Miller, publisher of Newsweek Press, which publishes the Minnehaha Messenger. I also want to say thank you, and we really appreciate Dave as a company also to be able to write for us, to provide for our readers. So thank you, guys, for everything you've done and for supporting community newspapers.
All right. We don't unfortunately have a motion to have an official county reporter, but I'm sure Dave would be high in the non-reelected. You're welcome. All righty. Next on our agenda is establish the record of the non-elected department heads for 2021.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. At the beginning, at the original meeting, your organizing meeting of the year, which is always the first meeting of the year, one of the things that you do is note record of who the non-elected or the appointed department heads are. And I'm not going to run through them, but you've got them all in front of there. We also list positions of public interest, and they're not department head positions. The only change I would make to that is that we had passed, Ralph retired this past year, and that has been absorbed into the Highway Department. So just noting of recording these.
Okay. And we do need a motion and a second, but no roll call vote, correct? Okay. So looking for a motion to approve the non-elected department heads, Commissioner Bender.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call, I'm sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And next, official annual business, the Minnehaha County Coroner for 2021.
Carol Muller, Commission Office. State, per state law, you are required by resolution to appoint the coroner on an annual basis. So before you today is the resolution authorizing the appointment of the Minnehaha County Coroner, which would be Dr. Kenneth Snell.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Bender?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously. And the last of our special business is we have to set our salary for 2021.
Commissioners, South Dakota codified law requires the Board of County Commissioners to establish their salary at the first regular meeting of each year. If you fail to determine a salary, the salary is set by statute, which would be $7,233. Your salary for 2020 was $29,181 with 60 cents, with approximately $1,000 for the chairperson in recognition of the rolls' extra assignments. Those are, sound like odd dollars, but we like to have them divisible by 26 for the purpose of payroll. So that's the reason why they're odd numbers that are out there. What we're bringing forward for you is consideration of a resolution, which would include a 2% salary increase for the Commissioners and an additional $1,000 for the chairperson. So that is the, would be the motion before you today.
Thank you. Carol? Comments? Commissioner Barth?
Well, I watched our chairperson last year work so very hard, and I think it's the hardest that, I mean, each year it seems to get more pressure onto the chairperson. And I think if you, if she holds her hand up, you'll see she has bony fingers. And so-
Sit on my hands?
As she hides them under the table. I, I think that the chair deserves a higher stipend than that, and so I was thinking about increasing it by $500 to $1,500. But if it needs to be divisible, perhaps it needs to be $520. And I, I'm waiting for advice from Gerald and Cindy. Jean, you work too hard. What do you think? $520 to make it $1,520?
I would second that for discussion.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. So right now, what we're considering is a motion to set the salary of the Commission Chair at a rate of $1,500 more than the Commission's salary.
In fact, $1,520 is what?
$1,520. Okay.
The resolution that you actually would, would sign then would state that the Commissioners, the four part-time Commissioners, non-chair, would be paid $29,765.32. And the 2021 annual salary for the chairperson of the Board of Commissioners with that approximately $1,500 would be $31,265.52.
$285. Okay, so would that be your motion and a second?
That would work for me, so.
Other comments? Commissioner Hyburger?
I would agree with Jeff that I think every year it has gotten harder and harder. And I would agree that Commissioner Bender went way above and worked really, really hard these last two years. Yeah, she worked her fingers to the bones. She really did. She put in a lot, a lot of hours. I mean, I think when I was chairman, I worked a lot of hours, but not even close to what has happened this last year with her being on committees and then with the COVID response and just a lot of things. It's just, it isn't an easy job, and I think that Commissioner Karski coming in too is, he's going to be busy.
If you're scaring me, it's working.
Both people with full-time jobs other than this full-time job.
All righty. I guess the only other comment, Carol, this salary that we're setting, where is that in relation to last year? Can you show that information? What type of increase is it?
It's a 2% increase.
2%, which is a-
2%, and Trish, if you could scroll up, you'll, right there. Okay. For background, 2020 was $29,181. 2019 was $28,100. 2018 was $27,830. And 2017 was $27,019.
So this is a 2% increase, which is in line with what?
Yes, which is in line with what the staff-
With all the staff received also.
-had for matrix adjustments, yes.
Okay, so we're not taking any more or any less than the staff did.
Correct.
We're doing for ourselves what we did for them. And I think it's important also that we maintain a salary for this position that makes it, because it is a very busy office to hold. But we do need to encourage, in every way that we can, people, when it comes time for, if they're considering running for this office, that we make it worth their time and compensate them for the effort that they put into it. So I think it's important that we do maintain a very, you know, competitive yet conservative salary for these positions. So that's just my two cents. Commissioner Barth?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. You know, when I first won this job, the Commission had just given themselves a 19-point something percent raise. And that's because they had gone many years without getting a raise. And I think that that's unconscionable, to let it get that far out of whack, that you have to take a 20% raise. And so by incrementally increasing it, keeping up with, with basically our general population, I think, I think it's to our benefit and to the community's benefit, because otherwise people get upset, and there's no reason to be upset about this increment.
Okay.
If I can just add one comment on to there, just for clarification for the public, you do not receive any benefits for doing this. You do not receive health insurance. You do not rece, you are not part of any retirement system. Those are not benefits that you receive in your position, only the salaries.
We're not even allowed to be buried in the county cemetery.
All righty. So we have a motion and a second. We need a roll call vote, so let's have a roll call vote.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. We now move into our routine business, and we have to approve our minutes from our December 29th, 2020 meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Bills to be paid in the amount of $2,411,626.12.
Pay the bills. Second.
Motion and a second. Comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Barth?
Today's bills include 1.4 for the, 1.4 million for the Highway Department, of which 1.12 million was for utility, moving utilities. We had 32,000 in outside attorneys that we paid for, over and above what we pay for our public defender, public advocate. We also had 350,000 for armor correctional health, which is for the jail. So you take those, you know, one and a half million out of there, and our bills are quite modest today.
Thank you. Commissioner Barth? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Reports, no action, but we do have our auditors' account with the Treasurer for October and November of 2020. And then we also have our routine person, we'll move into our routine personnel action, and the reports are sitting on the white binder right there by Commissioner Hyburger. Commissioner Hyburger?
The reports are also on file at the Auditor's Office if anybody would like to review them, so.
Thank you very much. Public records, so. Carrie Deaver, welcome.
Good morning. Carrie Deaver from Human Resources. I have a few items for you. The first is a request to approve the routine actions.
So we got routine personnel action.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And now we move into our anniversaries.
Always a fun time of the month is to recognize our employees who've been with us for a significant amount of time. We're celebrating several in January. We have Melissa Schmidt, who's an engineering specialist at the Highway, celebrating five years. We have Darren Gonzer and Dave Dunlap, who are appraisers in our equalization office, and they're both celebrating five years and I believe are joining us virtually. So thanks to them. We also have Neville Smith, a deputy sheriff with the Sheriff's Office, celebrating 15 years, who came and took some time to join us this morning. And we also have Jill Van Velt Heisen, who's an education assistant at the museum, celebrating 20 years of service. And then we have Scott Hacking, a corporal at the jail, and Kevin Gans, a curator of education at museum. Both of them are celebrating 25 years of service with the county.
If my math is right, that's a total of 100 years of service just from those individuals. Thank you very much. Neville, thank you. Comment? No comment? All righty. Moving on to recording our December 2020 volunteers, for the record.
Each month, we set a record of the volunteers that we've had at county for December 2020. We were at 163. You might remember, that's a little bit lower than we have tracked in past years, mostly due to COVID, but our gratitude for all of those people who are helping us out, and I believe nine different areas of the county.
We very much appreciate it. Every month, we see that list, and it's just tremendous, the volunteers we have, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. There are no abatements recommended for approval. We do have a notice and request from the Highway Department for a change order for construction project MC 18-10. Who do we have? Any? I'm sorry? It's just a notice. Okay, so no action there. Okay, thank you, Carol. Planning and zoning notices, there are none, and we will move into our petition for compromise of lien, DPNO 42783, in the amount of $3,457.
Good morning, Commissioners. Melinda Storey, Commission Office. The action requested today is to release the lien only insofar as a real property with no payment, leaving the balance of the lien in the name of the lienee. There's only one lienee on DPNO 42783 in the amount of $3,457, and that is the petitioner's ex-husband, who received legal defense recorded September 23rd, 2019. The petitioner was awarded possession of her home when she and her husband divorced July 23rd, 2019. However, the lien has attached to the real property at 206 East Fourth Street. The lienee recently transferred his interest in the property to the petitioner by quick claim deed. The document is pending recording by the Register of Deeds Office as of December 30th, 2020. The petitioner states that she has sold the home and that the home is expecting, the sale is expecting to close on January 11th, 2021. I did receive yesterday the, a copy of the purchase agreement in the, in the afternoon, and it does state that there is a closing date of January 11th. She believes that the lien is not her responsibility and is asking if you'll consider releasing the property from the lien so she can move forward with the sale of the home. The property legally described as the west, 129.7 feet of Lot 6, North Lawn Edition of Hartford, Minnehaha County, South Dakota, according to the reported plat thereof. The petitioner is here to answer any of your questions.
Okay. Thank you, Melinda. As a petitioner, you don't have to come to the podium or introduce yourself, but if you'd like to make any additional comments, we welcome them, so.
First of all, thank you. First of all, thank you for having this process all together. The sale of this house has been quite difficult. I'd like to extend a thank you also to Melinda. She made the whole process so incredibly neat. She is a gem as far as I can tell. I mean, the facts are, I didn't incur this debt. This debt was incurred by my ex-husband. After we were divorced, our divorce decree states that we will each cover our own debts. I would say that I have more than covered his debts in the process of him. He was in pursuit. So I'm just asking for a little leeway on this very small home. He will still be responsible for it. I don't currently receive any child support from him. He was just released in November, and I don't see it in foreseeable future. So this is just, I'm just trying to set me and my children up for, for the near future. So I just ask that this be-
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner Bender?
Well, I'd say that the record is clear that this debt was incurred by her ex-husband following the effective date of their divorce. And so I would make a motion, if we're at that point, to go ahead and release the lien as far as the real property with no payment, but leaving the balance in the name of the lienee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anybody who'd like additional comments? Okay. We do need a roll call vote for this.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Melinda is a gem.
She is a gem, yes. We're glad that's recognized.
She really is. I've never had any experience with anyone, anyone ever as far as to comment on it, so I really appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
We love Melinda.
All righty. We are now at that point in our meeting for public comment. Is anybody here that would like to address the Commission for open public comments? Anybody coming, running down the hall? No? Okay. Oh, Commissioner Barth, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I got to get used to saying mister. You know, this is the third time I've taken advantage of this moment in a meeting, and I just want to say that at one time I was a citizen. I, I lived overseas. I lived in South Africa, for example. I got to see the situation with apartheid. Nelson Mandela was imprisoned. He was still in prison when I left. I was a citizen, though. I came back to the United States, and you might be interested to know that I supported Richard Nixon, because he had a plan to end the Vietnam War, and I didn't want to be killed there. Of course, four years later, he ran again with the same secret plan to end the war, and then I was a little miffed. So I changed over. But in any case, since then, I've, I'm sorry to say, become a politician. Yes, as a citizen, you're a citizen. As a, when you get elected, it's over. You're now a politician.[1716.46] politician. And in 1992, in South Dakota, I ran for the state house, lost. '94, lost. '98, for the senate, lost. 2002, for county commission, lost. 2016, for the senate, and lost. 2020, for the state house, and lost. I did win a couple, but I lost more. I just want to say that if I had 11,780 more votes, I would have won all of those elections.
You are persistent. Alrighty. Anybody else for public comment? Alrighty, then we'll move on to regular business. A briefing on the fiscal year 21 commissioner liaison assignments. Carol Muller?
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. Each year, commissioners are assigned different department heads, officials' offices, outside agencies where we contribute financially to, to serve as a liaison. And before you today is the proposed 2021 liaisons. This actually is a working document that we put together, because it's actually the sheet you guys sign up on and indicate interest for. So you can see who did 18, 19, 20, and 21 for you. But these are the proposed departments that each of you would have. You'll notice the asterisk is behind some of those names underneath departments. And that is because those are reviews, because you serve as direct supervisors of the non-elected department heads. And we try to make sure there's a fair amount of equality with the amount of reviews and supervision that you guys each get to do. So that is before you today for your, really, this is just a briefing. There's no adoption needed for it. We will turn around and send this out after today's meeting.
Thank you, Carol. And as everybody up here is aware, a lot of considerable amount of time and discussion goes into these assignments. And if you do the math, there's 50-plus assignments that this commission splits between them, which is, I mean, some of them are annual reviews of department heads that we do collaboratively, but it's, almost every one of them means an additional meeting, sometimes monthly and sometimes more often. So that's the role of a county commissioner. If anybody wonders what we do, it's more than the limited amount of time we spend right here on a Tuesday morning. It goes and goes and goes. No action on that item, but we will consider a resolution to restore tax deed property RDID 45063 and 45065 to the former owner of title, Kim Adamson.
She's probably running down the hill.
Welcome, Kim.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Adamson from the auditor's office. We have brought an action forward today to restore tax deed 1333 and tax deed 1335 to the former owner of record. The treasurer's office has received payment from the former owner, Maynard Keith Gilbertson, in the amounts of $9,368.64 on tax deed 1333, which is for parcel number 45063. They've also received $52,242.39 on tax deed 1335 for parcel number 45065. These payments represent all amounts due and owing on the tax deeds. So at this time, we ask that you approve the resolution to restore these properties to the former owner of record.
Commission, comments?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second, and we will need a roll call vote.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Kim.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to move into some briefings. Our first briefing today is from the Suland Heritage Museums, Bill Hoskins. Morning, Bill.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bill Hoskins, Director of the Suland Heritage Museums. I'm here today to give you a brief overview of the museum operation in 2020 and some of the things that might be coming down the road. COVID-19 is probably one of the most significant historical events to hit our country in our lifetime. And it certainly had a major impact on the Suland Heritage Museums and the way we do business. Pretty much every aspect of our operation's been impacted. But in particular, our educational programming and our rentals has been the most impacted. Normally, we, we give, we give hundreds of programs to tens of thousands of people in a year. Last year was not, not the case. When the schools closed down in March, one of the first things we did was establish a YouTube channel and create videos of some of the most-used programs by the schools and make them available to the teachers that we ordinarily do those programs for. That, that was marginally successful. Today, we're moving more towards what we are calling live virtual programming, where the presenter and the teachers and students can have more interaction. And I think that that is going to probably become a permanent fixture and certainly offers some opportunities. An example, in April, I had a program scheduled that I was doing face-to-face for Ollie, the Osher Lifelong Learning Institute at USD. It had a class limit of 50 people. It got rescheduled to September as a, as a virtual live program using a Zoom platform in that case. And it, it went well, but it had 154 people. And instead of being limited by the physical space or by geography, because in the fall, we had students from all over the state who were able to participate, instead of those just from the Sioux Falls area. So that's one of the things I see in the future. Rentals certainly was impacted. Basically, they were downsized, rescheduled, and in many cases, canceled. Two of our biggest rentals of the year were actually the primary and the general election that happened at the Old Courthouse Museum. Our exhibition program, both at the Old Courthouse and Pettigrew, is probably the least impacted. We were able to design, produce, and install new exhibitions at both the Old Courthouse and the Pettigrew. And although they were closed for about six weeks, from the 13th of March until the first week of June, we are open to the public. And I just remind, we're open daily at the Old Courthouse and the Pettigrew now, and people are welcome to come in. For, for a number of years, as I'm sure the commission's well aware, our focus had been on our collection, getting a new place to store the collection, packing it up, physically moving it, unpacking it, working on properly storing it in that new building. But even before COVID struck, we had been shifting to a new focus, and that's on our visitor, and trying to determine exactly what our visitors want from the museum. And one of the tools that we, we are using is the American Association for State and Local History's program called Visitors Count. And that's a program we started last fall. It, it will end up, they will benchmark our museum versus how we're doing with other museums throughout the United States. They, they do a lot of surveys. It's been delayed, but that's one of the things I hope to see completed in 2021. And the results of that, we will be bringing both to the museum board and the county commission. One of the, one of the surveys we did accomplish last year was a structural survey of the Old Courthouse Museum. And we've been doing that about every five years for essentially the last 20 years. And in February, structural engineer Greg Hannistad was able to go through the building. COVID sidelined him for a while. So I didn't actually receive the report until Thursday of last week. And I will be bringing that to the commission at a later date, as well as the museum board. We have been blessed with fantastic donors, even in 2020. We've had a number of donations to the museum's endowment. And as of last week, we received a donation that pushed us over one of our goals. We, we just pushed it over $2 million. Revenue from that endowment enters our budget through the museum's special enterprise fund that's determined in the joint budget hearing. And we use that revenue for educational programming, our exhibitions program, collection supplies and materials, staff training, among other things. So that's been great. And even though we've had COVID, and our volunteers were literally locked out of the building for over three months, we've had 82 volunteers who have donated over 2,200 hours in 2020 in support of the museum's operation. They're really priceless individuals, and, and so is their work. One other thing I wanted to mention quickly was, one of my disappointments was that the annual meeting of the Mountain Plains Museum Association, which was originally scheduled to happen in Sioux Falls in September of 2020, was canceled. And it, it has been rescheduled, and we're hoping to hold that October 5 through the 8 of 2021, again in Sioux Falls. That's a, that's a really quick high-point briefing. If you have any questions, more than happy to answer now or later.
Commissioner Hyburger?
Just a comment. You know, we're on campus quite frequently, and it's not usually on my high priority list to run over to the museum and just check out what's going on. But I did go this last month and run through the museum for a little while. And if you haven't been over there, they have a wonderful exhibit on motorcycles, which I'm thinking I need to find a time to get my husband to go over and look at, because I think he'd love it. They also had another one of toys, and it was kind of like walking down memory lane. And it was like, I had that, I had that, my sister had that. It was actually really fun. And so they are open for business. And so if you just got an hour, 45 minutes, a half an hour, stop by and just look at their exhibits. They do have some really fun exhibits.
So many comments. Anybody else?
Do we have a new liaison to the museum?
I think.
I'm teasing, Cindy.
No. It's kind of neat when you can go look, but it's kind of different when your childhood toys are in a museum. I don't know what that means.
I'm thinking I can contribute a few things.
Alrighty. Bill, thank you for your presence, being here. It's great to hear from you. And yeah, great update.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty. We have an annual review of our Minnehaha County Facility Power Outage Response Protocol. Craig?
Good morning, Craig Dewey, Commission Office. This is one of those first meeting of the year items. Just to let you know that the Power Outage Response Protocol was emailed out to department heads at the end of last year. That review, according to county policy, Procedure 14B, is required to be conducted by February 1. So that notice has been provided to you.
And all the departments have had input into this protocol, and it's been reviewed by everybody that needs to, correct?
It is up to the individual department heads to review it with their staffs, but the HR department has emailed it out. I don't recall since I have been at the county that the protocol has been revised.
Okay. Other comments? It again is a review and a briefing, so thank you. Craig? Liaison reports. It's kind of, last week was kind of slow with the holidays and stuff, so we haven't been at a lot of meetings. So not surprising we don't have any liaison reports. Old business. About new business. Commissioner Barth?
Just so you know, I didn't do this under old business, but I think we all owe Jean a thank you for what she did this past year.
And I have thanked her. Thank you very much.
Yes. That's very kind. Everybody did a lot of work the last few years. And it was a real honor to serve as your chair.
If there was a way to give you back pay, I would be in favor of that. All right. I need a motion to recess the Minnehaha County Commission meeting.
My motion. Second?
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Bender?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. That passes. We will, it's 9:44. We'll be back in here at 9:55.
Yeah, I didn't think so. I was looking at Carol to see, we don't have an exec today.
Adhere then.
Well, I was just following the agenda, so, okay. So we're back. I will reconvene our meeting. Shortest recess on record. And I will look for a motion to adjourn, I guess.
So move. Second.
Right, motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Meeting is adjourned.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
I panicked, Monica, because I'm like, I didn't-